We've got our work session today. I'll just turn it over to Dr. Crowell to get us going.
Thanks. Hope everybody had a good Thanksgiving. It's good to have everybody back and, and thanks for taking the time on the first day back to come to a work session. I'm going to turn it over to Kent and Carrie. I don't know how much Carrie is going to be involved in this, but turn it over to Kent and he'll start through the budget update. And then the plan is to go through the policies, just give you an overview, talk about those a little bit that I sent to all of you. I think you have hard copies in front of you. We've got time. Esam's going to do a little bit of overview of the enrollment information that he compiled and that we handed out at the last board meeting. And then once Julie gets here, I'll tell you a little bit about those bio sheets that are attached in front of you as well. So Kent, I'm going to turn it over to you. Okay?
Yeah, it sounds fine. Trying to get this. I've got the PDF here of the operating budget. You should have received a booklet like this. It has the operating budget and supplemental information. I'm just going to pretty much walk through that, starting with the operating budget. So the first thing really that shows up here is our notes to the operating budget. And a few notes about the funds that we put into the operating budget. That's standard in that way for years and years. In the student credit hours, we've updated the credit hours for FY23 here to the best estimate that we have at this time. And I should kind of say that obviously this is our fall update. Excuse me. We will do another update in the spring. And so, you know, we have particularly enrollment changes between fall and spring. We'll note those, which probably going to be April when we give you that update. We are down about 5% from last year. So you can kind of see the trend is still downward there. Um, you know, and just some basic information on the local taxes, the evaluation mill levy and the amount of taxes levied, you see the amount of taxes levied has actually stayed the same the last three years. The valuation has gone up about 6% last year and about 10% for this year. And so you can see the sort of offsetting decrease in the mill levy there. So we did tell you, I think in September, that the county clerk notified us of the evaluation that they gave us in July was probably going to go down $2.7 million. And it did. So it, it made a difference in the the mill rate of about six one hundredths of a mill went up due to that valuation going down. And we did receive that certification from the county clerk in October. And then just you see a trend on salary information here. We did have 5% raise for 2023. On the health insurance, it says, you see there that we were estimating was going to go up 5%. I was talking with Shelley today. Really, that probably should have been zero. So we'll get that updated because we really didn't have increased costs for benefits this year. We'll update that for the spring. So going over to the next page is sort of a summary of what we showed you as an estimate for the current year in August. And then what we're updating it to here in November. So you can see that on the revenue side, we're we have an estimate going down of 785,000. And I'll go ahead and go over to the next page and look at that in detail. So with our enrollment decline, you can see that overall on line 10 here, we're estimating the, the tuition and fee revenue for the current year to be about 17,600,000. Back in August, we were estimating 18.5 million. So that's a decrease of a little over $900,000 from the August estimate to our current estimate. And again, we'll look at that in the spring. See if that changes. Few other changes in the state aid, the XL and CTE, or sometimes we refer to that as SB 245. We overestimated that by $179,000. Down in the local taxes, the tax in process, that's
Yeah, go ahead. About the XL and CTE. That estimate sometimes is hard to come up with because we get paid in arrears for the credit. I mean, we teach the credit hours and then we request reimbursement for that funding. So when you, when you put forth that estimate for XL and CTE, you're actually kind of doing it blindly based on, you know, what you think your credit hours are going to be. And then they will, they reimburse you after, you know, in arrears. So, so that's when they make those adjustments. And whether you get, you know, what you've estimated or what you get less.
Yeah.
Yes.
Again, why the motor vehicle tax stays the same.
The, we had no indication that the estimate that we made in August is incorrect. So what we're showing you is the estimate we made in August.
Is the motor vehicle tax still taxed on each vehicle that's tagged in Butler County?
Yes.
It seems to me that there would be either an increase in vehicles tagged in Butler County.
Well, I'm not sure what it was last year. I think
That always surprises me.
Well, this just means that that number hasn't changed between what the estimate was in August that we presented and what where we are in November. It doesn't mean that throughout the year it's a change, but right now we, they haven't received any change in
Yeah. So this is based on the actual amount we got last year. We just carried that forward as our estimate. It comes in throughout the year. So we really don't have enough of the receipts in this year to know if it's going to be up or down.
That usually something they provide after year end. And they usually provide that after they have a full calendar year of data.
Periodically, Carrie, do you, can you speak to that at all? That's okay. So I mean, the point is So the one thing that we were able to ascertain on the local taxes is that we received 345,000 so far in taxes and process. And those are taxes from last year's levy that get paid, that we received the receipt for in the current year. And we had estimated that lower at 210,000. And then the other change down on line 22 is really an interest income. We haven't received much interest income for quite some time. The, the rates have been so low that we receive on our CDs and the municipal pool, but they are obviously going up. So we do feel that's appropriate to raise that estimate. So going back then to the first page here.
How much money do we have in investments and what's the current rate of return?
Um, yeah, that'd be fine.
And the current rate of returns?
So then looking at the net expenditures, and we will ask you next month to go ahead and approve the, the updated budget. And sort of page four here, really not too much going on with expenditures. There was a we update the estimate, the foundation reimburses the college for some of the salary expenses each year. We pay, the college actually pays all the salaries and then the foundation reimburses a portion of that. And their reimbursement will actually go up $6,000 this year. So our expenditure, the net effect on our expenditures is that the expenditures will go down $6,000 from what we were showing in August. Our part-time overload, we're estimating that we're, we estimated, we think we estimated $400,000 too high in August. And in looking at that, that we think maybe that's cumulative over two years that it didn't get adjusted last year. So there seems to be, well, there is a trend of those salaries going down. Obviously, we're having fewer courses and fewer adjuncted structures. And the one increase to the budget then would be this to adjust the athletic insurance. That insurance was approved back in June. Again, we just at that time, we knew what it was going to be, but it didn't get into the current budget that we showed you in August. So we're just going back and adjusting that up to what the actual amount is. So the overall net, it's a net decrease of about 370,000 to the overall expenditure budget. So going back to the summary page then. We're still showing an unspent budget estimate here on line four of 2.2 million dollars. So that's about 4% of our overall budget. Actually, the past couple of years, it's been a little higher than that, but that could be affected by COVID and some of the HERF funds. In the past, traditionally, we only put like a 1% in or 2%. So this is a little higher. And we'll look at that again in the spring. Sometimes we're able to tell. You know, at least on the salary side of it in particular, what kind of unspent budget we may be looking at. So again, we'll look at that in the spring. So given those updated estimates, we are looking at a deficit expenditures over revenues of 1.5, almost 1.6 million dollars. And we would end up our operating unencumbered cash with 8.5 million dollars. To be at the 10.5%, which has sort of historically been our, our goal. We would still be over that target in the unencumbered cash for the operating budget by 2.6 million. And I will say that we had some discussion about whether the 10.5 was where we wanted to be when we had the budget presentation in August and September. We really haven't done anything to update that or look at that, but maybe something we want to continue to look at in the future. So any questions on the operating budget portion of the update? Shall we?
I said a couple. In October, just for the international students, we were told that the international headcount, headcount went up 30% and credit hours went up 41%. But I'm only seeing like a 5% increase. And then there's like a $47,000 decrease on international tuition, which I know we lowered the tuition, but I think we were planning on that amount. I'm just, I'm just curious why those numbers are.
Yeah, we were hoping that the increase enrollment would cover that. I don't know if Esam or someone else would like to speak to that, but we, we get these numbers basically from IR from what the international credit hours are. And we updated from that. So so one thing that I did last year was when I lowered the the tuition rate for our district, I increased the enrollment. And so what happened is it probably went up and it didn't go up enough to cover that change. In other words, I took a break even estimate for this year based on that lower tuition. So I had to increase enrollment. I could go back and check those numbers and tell you exactly.
Question was a month ago on, we were told that the headcount went up 30% and the credit hours 41%. Well, we only added 145 credit hours, just 5%. I don't know where the 30% and the 41% came from.
When we added that amount to the amount that I estimated, so I put in a big increase in estimate into the budget projection that I showed you in August.
So some was already there.
I understand, but 145 credit. I just don't see how we were told that it went up 30 and 40% when it was five. That seems like a big discrepancy.
Well, I can go back if you, and look at those numbers. Kind of awkward to try to do it right now, but, but I, I, I put a big estimate increase in enrollment to cover that large decrease in the tuition rate. And so what this to me says is I made a big estimate increase in the number of credit hours and we didn't quite go up that high.
I guess just to break my two questions into one question is right here in the international. We went from 30, 35 to 3180, which was a 5% increase in credit hours. But we were told a month and a half ago, we went up 41% in credit hours. I don't see.
They are told, well.
Yeah, we got
I will bring these numbers to you at the next board meeting.
I just, I mean, we got an email and at the meeting we were told. And then Dr. Crowell reiterated in an email.
Well, it's important to remember, I think what we were reporting were 20-day numbers as well, or first day numbers, correct?
The 30, he going from FY22 to 3,035, 3,180, 3,180 is still an estimate. So it could have, so international made up when, in just the fall semester, 30%. Because FY23 is 1,000.
Right.
Part of that is the spring estimate.
Yeah.
It's not just
So should this number, when we see it again, it'll be 4,000 something? Are you, are we saying this number is wrong?
No, it's not incorrect. It's an estimate for the entire year of credit hours. So that's going to include all spring and summer. But when someone spoke about an increase in international credit hours, they were only looking at all.
I understand. It says international headcount up 30%. I'm talking in circle, I guess. And credit hours are up 41%. That's
These, these are annual estimates. These are annual estimates. That was just a fall comparison from a year ago to where we were in fall. So this doesn't capture that same data set. What you're looking at here doesn't capture the same numbers.
Right. I, I assume we'll see a number in the future that shows the number we were told a month ago that's 41% higher than it was the previous year.
I think what you're getting at, that's the point that once you get the spring numbers, it should ideally be from this is trying to do this, but we should be those at that point.
But we have the 20th day numbers compared to last year's 20th day numbers. So this, this FY22 number of 3,035 was just an estimate. We're still showing an estimate or is that an actual fall of 20, of last week's?
That's it. That's what actually was for the entire fiscal year.
Okay.
So we didn't show the information you're talking about. We didn't show the fall, fall. We showed the entire year.
Okay. Do we have the 20th day number broken out of international? Somewhere. Okay. 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 I see, I see what I'm looking at. All right. Thank you.
Sure. Thanks, Carrie. Some, I'm going to go ahead and move on to the supplemental information. Then, which is a, there's a tab in your booklet and this comes right after the tab. So the first page here is a listing of all the, the smaller miscellaneous designated funds. It's on page one, I believe, S1. I'm not going to go through those. You can take a look at them. We've touched base on some of them in the past. And we're continuing to monitor those and look at them in our VP group as we go into the, the current budget discussions for next year.
That's all of our maintenance that we're doing.
Well, the HERF indirect, and I do show that broken out on page S2. What that is, is that's a summary really of all the where we're at with all the HERF money that went into the to the general fund. In other words, some of the HERF money, most of the HERF money was spent directly from the grant fund. Some of it, we were able to take to the general fund for lost revenue or reimbursement for administrative cost expenses for the grant. And that's what's shown here. And so during this year, we had a beginning balance of 464,000. We're estimating that we'll bring in another 1.8 million. Most of that's already here. I don't know. We have a little bit still outstanding. Carrie, are we still waiting on the, the fall the lost revenue to come back on that? Okay. So that shows all that money coming in. And then where the money is, is going, what the money's going for. And there are some changes here from what we showed you in August. We had decided to put a, pay in advance for several of our software licenses, sort of get a leg up in the future on that. And we, we'll talk a little more about some of that when we get to the IT designated fund and the the spending plan they have for the next several years. You see that there's a lot of escalators and, and software costs that are going to go up in the future. So we've decided to go ahead and apply some of the indirect HERF money to the, some of these Microsoft licenses, Adobe, the Palo Alto. And in order to do that, we weren't able to take quite as much to the deferred maintenance down here on line 19 and to the insurance deductible on line 21. So we wanted to kind of adjust that to where our current estimate is from where our estimate was in August. We've looked at, and we're going to bring you a summary of the HERF grant money in total that was received by the college. And it was you know, totally was, I think a little over 14 million to the institution. And then I think another 11 million to students. And then I will have a breakdown of, of what all that was spent for now that we finally got to the end of that. And we should be able to get that to you here in the next month or so. So then the next page is again, more of the designated reserves, but from the PTE fund, the tech head fund. And you can see a lot of this is fee money. And there is an anomaly here on line 13 showing the nursing digital resource fee as in the red. I think part of that is will come from the, the next line down to Kaplan. But as
In the supplemental section.
As Karen and I talked about today, we still do have some conversation with nursing to see how they're going to take care of that. They probably come out of their operating budget, but we need to work with them on that. So then some of the larger reserve funds on the next page, which is S4 here. This is our academic development fund. We normally transfer about $40,000 each year from the operating fund over there. Had a balance going into the year on line 17 there of 329,000. And you can see on line seven through 13, this is their spending plan for the current year. So if those items are all spent as we're anticipating here, the, the academic development fund would end up with a balance of 42,513. So against, it's the revenues and an estimated spending plan for this fund or this reserve. I'm just going to go on, but stop me if you have questions. The strategic initiative designated reserve, and this was started last year. There was some of the indirect HERF funds went in here. Or I think it was actually some of the unspent excess budget from the operating fund, put about $2 million in there. We are planning on spending up to about $300,000 for process improvement consulting and software. I know that there are some engagements currently going on. I know in accounting and, and some of the other areas, we're using a company called Parelli to come in and do some process, business process analysis to see where we might be able to gain some improvements in our processes in the future. Hopefully conserve some of our man hour man hours where there's a lot of pressure right now. The other thing, this is where we added the 1.25 million that was approved at the last board meeting for the purchase of the Redler Culinary Building. And so we make those expenditures, we would end up the year with 550,000 in that designated reserve. And this facilities fund, each year we transfer And this facilities fund um each year, uh we transfer uh funds in there. We had, let's see. Yeah, the annual transfer this year on line four was three hundred and forty nine thousand, about almost three hundred and fifty thousand from the general fund. Then our spending plan here is shown below. We use like uses for a lot of uh sort of um annual upgrades to things like carpet. Uh there's some parking lot repairs just some deferred maintenance items and so forth. And um so uh we do have about a ninety five thousand dollar contingency left down on line thirty one. But generally, look at this as a break even fund that we will estimate the the expenditures that we can pay for during the year out of that fund. Then the deferred maintenance reserve. We started the year with four hundred, excuse me, four million eight hundred and ninety uh eight thousand. There was a a beginning balance adjustment, one seventy five on that. But about four point seven million beginning balance. We still had the Simpson Project. This was part of the um edu care um building remodel, the uh and most of it was for the five hundred building HVAC project. That was like a two million dollar project there. So um we've updated that estimate. I know Ireland presented that last last month. And there was a an update and and some addition to the expenditures there due to the sort of inflation from the time that was estimated a year ago. Uh the various projects shown here on line twelve are detailed in on the next page. There's four hundred and forty six thousand, sort of a variety of items here from the BG Stadium HVAC controls, parking lot, several different buildings um there. And you can see what the plan is for this year. So that would bring our deferred maintenance designated reserve down to one point two seven million at the end of the year. So it'll still be a significant uh balance left here, left there if our spending plan um proves to be accurate for this year. And just a few more of these um going on here on the capital project designated reserve. We started the year there with one point one million roughly. Uh and this is where we're taking the four hundred and sixty four thousand dollars that was approved for the softball stadium program or excuse me, project. So uh if there are no other expenditures that come up there through the year, we are estimating the ending balance to be about six hundred and fifty five thousand there. Technology designated reserve. The spending plan on this and we're just um you know, showing this just about break even for the year here. The actual spending plan uh is shown on the next page. We're only showing about three hundred and twenty thousand for the current year. And again, that's partially because we're able to pay for some items um from the HIRF indirect money. You can see that um this um the expenditures kind of go up significantly as we project out in the future on this this um reserve. Yeah.
On page S eleven is the in Miami Chance that knew only mainly used in criminal labs computer that we were last month.
The criminal lab.
It's a it's a very sophisticated computer that is spare itself other information. I guess computers mainly used in criminal labs to gather evidence.
I don't, I
And that's about forensic laptop or something.
Oh, I mean, it it's not, it doesn't come out of my, they may have.
I think it was in that giant list that.
Yeah, I just
I mean, it my only my only thought was my only thought was if that's a no, I I'll have to look. I didn't order a forensic laptop, so or a forensic computer, but I'll look and see which I'll find it. Well, yeah, I mean, clearly, I'll I'll find it. I'll find it. I'll let you know.
Okay, it was under the expenses.
I mean, it may have been, I guess it may have been for a police department. I I don't know.
It it wasn't built to the police department.
I mean, I pay for computers for the depart, I'll figure it out. I'll find.
Yeah, and I just kind of wondered what.
Yeah, I'll find it. I'm on it, doggone it.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't say that right.
No, I I get, yeah, it's fine. I'm I'll find it.
It was. It's actually listed on maybe as a computer good enough to track evidence needed for court pieces. That's how it described it. So just let me know.
It was, and it was.
That's fine. Uh we're happy to have your questions and.
They're just normal classroom computers.
Those are just classroom computers and that's those we've, yeah, that's just there. Yeah, that's not it.
So uh moving on to the next page, this would be S twelve. And we show a couple of our reserves here. Well, um the the first part is the insurance deductible designated reserve. And we're estimating now that um that'll be four hundred and eighty thousand at the end of the year. We did have uh some a vehicle claims about twenty thousand um that came out of that. I think it was actually maybe last year. But it it came out this year. We were hoping to put another five hundred thousand in there from the HIRF designated reserve, but um really that was that money was better suited, we felt, for uh the software uh um future software needs, as I mentioned, when we were talking about the HIRF indirect. So we do we do think we'll end up, um should knock on wood, hope we don't have any big deductibles here in the next six months, but we're hoping to tend up the year with almost five hundred thousand and they're not quite. And then the lower part of the page, this is the capital outlay mill levy fund, a five year mill levy. This is the money that's still left over in in that fund that can be used for any kind of capital uh expenditure, deferred maintenance or so forth. And right now, we just haven't we haven't allocated that for any purpose. It's it's a reserve that's we shall have on hand at this time.
Kent, are there are there annual funding sources that are adding to that fund?
No, that there the the funding source that was for the mill levy that sunset uh in twenty, I think, twenty twenty one.
Then I guess I'm not understanding that why, what's the, why is it, why is the revenue being added to it?
Oh, that's just like taxes in process or delinquent taxes. So it takes the county a few years. When we have a mill, I'd be like for twenty twenty one, we don't get all of that money until twenty twenty three.
Oh, okay. So it it's still money coming in off the original mill. It's just coming in.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, it's like delinquent taxes. So they're moving on um page S thirteen is our campus life funds. And then there's a separate page for each of these. I'm not going to go in into them in the detail. You can see that we um started the year with around four point six million. We do think that we'll spend that down and we did budget uh in August to spend that down. And so um we still um feel like we'll be over four million dollars in this fund. Uh again, as we go through the spring, we'll talk about whether we want to continue to maybe spend that down. Or if we want to try to raise a book um cost to the students and the housing costs enough to break even right now. We're allowing that to come down a little bit uh so that there's always a trade off there because that money comes from the students through either housing fees or book purchases. So again, uh have a healthy balance there. Uh in the past, that fund has been used to uh make improvements to both the student union facility here in El Dorado and at Andover. And of course, any kind of maintenance or deferred maintenance or any of our um on on campus housing. Um let me see, I may not sure there's anything else here I really want to highlight. Oh, there's one other thing. Okay, our restricted funds, um we have a restricted fund for the self funded insurance. And so we completed our first year of the self funded plan. It's on a October one to September thirty plan year. It doesn't coincide with our fiscal year. So on page um S twenty two here, this is a cash basis summary of the operations for that first year of our self funded insurance plan. So we took in net contributions of three point four million and the net contributions are the uh contributions that the college makes and the contributions that the employees make. Uh less the Blue Cross Blue Shield admin fees, the IMA admin fees and the dental premiums. So again, the the college makes a contribution, the employees make a contribution. Some of that goes for fees and dental insurance. The rest of it goes for the self funded claims. And we had self funded claims paid during the first uh plan year of three million one hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Also during that time, uh we put in one million uh of investment from the college. This was from the HIRF indirect. And there's going to be another five hundred from the HIRF indirect that will go in there. Uh so on a cash basis, we had um two hundred and thirty thousand more in um contributions that we had claims. Now, this doesn't really tell a story, and I don't know if you want to speak to this a little bit. But uh we actually Shelley told me we had probably actually saved almost a million dollars in fees during the year that would have gone to Blue Cross and Blue Shield, not in their admin fees, but really for the risk that they take and the the risks that we assume. And so I think we had a good year. I will need to look at it because obviously um insurance or health, health coverage costs are going up. So that's part of what we'll be looking at. And IMA will help guide us um to look at what we need to do for our premiums for next year. And and that that work will take take place this spring. So yeah, um big shell, big thanks to Shelley and her staff for doing a lot of work to get us into that. It was something we've talked about for years, but you know, the risk reward, I don't think we ever got enough really good analysis and and by Shelley working with IMA, we felt pretty comfortable this year. So that's that's uh concludes my uh highlighting of the fall update. And again, we will ask you to approve the updated operating expenditure number next month.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
Can I ask one more question on my previous question? Uh just just trying to clear it in my head on the K board numbers. If it says non resident, is that international? Is that how we is that classified?
What's their definition of non resident?
Okay, do we have resident in district, resident out of district, resident by exception, in district, resident by exception, out of district, and non resident? Okay, okay. Of course.
In fall twenty one, there were one thousand one hundred and ninety five.
One one sixteen. Sorry, say that again. One six.
One six seven.
One six seven, okay.
First number.
One one nine five.
Okay. Thank you.
And one six seven one.
Any other questions for on the budget? I said one. On the fire science building, is that correct? We still owe about eleven or one point one million on that. It says it'll pay off in twenty thirty three. What page are you looking at, Kevin? That's the very last one.
S twenty seven, yes, up on twelve.
Sixth.
Or sixth, yeah.
Yeah, that just like a when you're maybe even a thirty year lease, it's an annual.
In the back of my mind, I thought we had paid a million total for it, but we still owe a million. So I didn't know what we may have paid to contribute.
I'd have to Well, this is construed, this is from when it was originally constructed.
Right, no, I understand, but we use it and the city uses it. It just seems like a large expense for no more students. I'm just curious.
It's what
A hundred grand a year.
What was the, it was the original, it was the original construction loan that this reflects.
I get I get that. It just seemed like a super expensive expense for the number of students that we put through. That's all I'm trying to say.
Well, it's it's a residential site, too. There's in-house residents there and living quarters and stuff like that as well.
Right. What's the total number of students?
Not the residence part. They they have their half that they pay for. We have the other half.
Either seven or seventeen. I don't remember. Ten students.
That live there. There's spaces for ten residents to live there. But that's where the, that's the classroom building for all of the EMS classes and the fire science classes and all of that. So.
So not just the firefighters?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Um before we start through the policies, there's uh attached, and I think it was right on top of the paper clipped policies, there's a bio sheet. Um one of the things that we need to do as we prepare for our Higher Learning Commission visit is to make sure that we have updated biographical information for the trustees. They Biographical information for the trustees, they like to know. You know, work experience, educational background, there's nothing, you know, no phone numbers or anything like that on it, but will you please write? Fill that out for us and get it back, I guess we hope by the December meeting, so that we can. Get it, you know, in our system, it'll be part of our evidence that we turn in for our assurance argument, so. Was that, yeah, you can send it, yeah. Oh, that'd be great, thanks, but if you'll fill that out completely for us, that would be helpful.
The prickly bear in me doesn't feel like I need to tell HLC what my hobbies are.
Well, that's fine, you can leave that off, but.
I I get it, but it's like.
I mean, that's just, this is an example of other ones that have been used for other institutions, if you don't want to fill out your hobbies, that's fine, but. I think it's important for the higher learning commission to know who our trustees are, what your experiences are and what your professions are, what your backgrounds are. You know, so it's basically, it's that information that's probably the most important, so. Well, then, you know.
That I don't, but I'm just.
That's fine, if you don't want to fill it out, that's fine, we'll just indicate in our assurance argument and in the evidence file that there were some trustees that that. Preferred not to fill out the information, so. I I'm just asking because we're trying to put the evidence together, so.
I'm just saying it's not.
Well, that's what you call it, that's what it's called, our evidence, they're called evidence files for all of our assurance argument. That's a higher learning.
I'm making the terrible Mary. It just goes against my personality to tell me I have to do something that I know I don't have to do. It rubs me the wrong way and I have to speak my mind, so. Thank you all know that by now, right?
No, it was charged to the information technology academics department. So, so. No, it's like the group that teaches IT. I don't get to teach IT important. So what it was, so Brett Eisenman, who teaches our cybersecurity cyber forensics class. It's a teaching machine for him and they they use that, it's got. It's from a company called, excuse me, I'm sick, a company called Digital Intelligence. It's got cybersecurity right blockers, it teaches them how to do. Like if if you're breezed or you have a cyber attack, how to get the digital forensics on the backend of it, so that's what that machine was, it was five thousand. Two hundred and twenty one dollars and they paid for it out of their. Out of their, they have a fees account for that program and it was paid for out of that. And and it was ordered September nineteenth, I've got all the details. So it wasn't, it wasn't like a computer that we buy for general use, it was a. It was not, it was paid for out of academics.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
I just want to let you know, I told you I'd find the answer. Yeah, that's what they teach the, like, so again, if there's a breach, they use, that's got the software that. Cybersecurity companies have to go back and kind of do the back trace on the breach. So it's that's the. Now, the police, El Dorado Police Department has their own. I don't live, I'm assuming that there, I'm assuming theirs was given to them by the Secret Service, but. Because I just got to do that tour last week and got to see that, as the mayor, I got to see that last week, it was kind of cool to see some of that. But anyway, I told you to find the information.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, thank you.
Emailed out a number of policies, we're, you know, we're continuing through our process to update the policies and get the employee handbook updated and. And so you've got the same policies in front of you in hard copy, we're just going to go through them in order. For discussion, hope is that we would have them in on the December agenda for approval. Some of these just have kind of some minor additions and minor changes to them, there's only one. Brand new policy, which is the acceptable use of college information systems and technology policy that I'll have Bill talk about, but let's talk about the copyright policy. You'll see on these copies that most of the changes are either you'll see a strike through, you'll see boldface if there's. If there's something new on most of these copies, on the copyright policy, it's mainly just to update information that was already. Present or to change some of the wording, so it's a little bit more updated, some of the grammar has been changed a little bit. The the added sections on the copyright policy that we didn't have previously. Was a section on displaying media on campus and for classroom use. And then something that specifically spoke to public performances, those are protected by copyright laws. And just as an update to this policy, we needed to include that information. So that it was in in the actual policy, we've also tried on some of these to. For instance. Like on the last page where we've crossed out the, we don't use faxes anymore hardly. And email addresses to kind of keep this a little bit more general so that in case, you know, Bill Young's. Position changes or we have a different vice president of digital transformation at some point in time, we aren't having to go back and change the name, all we have to do is. Is. You know, that information is still going to be the same, so the only, the the only two changes really to this one are displaying the media and the public performance, so you can read through that. No, these are, these are, this is mainly for using copyrighted information. Like films that they're being shown in in class or like the performances in the theater. The music's covered by copyright, films are covered by copyright, so this is, this is mainly for. A a policy that covers. Any copyrighted information that's being used somewhere on campus, our meetings are copyrighted, so. Questions about copyright? Okay. If you look at the records retention policy. Again, the the changes to this are. Fairly minor, a lot of the wording is still the same, what we did add was some additional language right at the very top. Under the purpose and then the policy, those first couple of areas where we talked specifically, we wanted to be really specific about. Folks understanding how this policy was applied, who has to abide by it. And what, you know, what it, that we have to comply with federal and state laws. I don't, I don't have it, no, I don't have it attached here. Oh, we'll look it up. And see how it applies. Each each area on campus. Has their own specific retention processes, we, because. You know, finance is different than financial aid is different than, you know, the academic areas, we don't have one blanket. Process that covers every area, so this policy covers the fact that. We we have to abide by records retention policies and then that the departments have to have their specific procedures that align with. This policy and that they follow those, so.
Has to go by that records retention policy according to state.
Okay, this says that we comply with federal and state laws and regulations, but we'll look up the statute for it. Okay.
And this is silly, it's epigraphic, but it looks to me like the font under policy is a different size than everything else.
This is just a draft.
Okay, just blanking it.
Yep, thank you, we'll get it, we'll get it all finalized and figured out, but. Yeah, and that's fine, thank you for doing that, but we've, you know, we've cut and pasted some of these things and a couple of different people have worked on them. On some of them and once we get the. Final copy and final approval, then we'll make sure everything's the same font, so. The identity theft prevention. Again, not. Significant change, except that we wanted again to identify that. The policies adopted in accordance, in accordance with fair and accurate credit transaction act. And and that we wanted to make sure that we had that as part of the policy. If you go down a little bit further. You'll see that we also included information about identity theft prevention. And some specific. Language that identifies that in court, in accordance with FACA and FTC red flag rules. Then we have to have a program or we're responsible for developing and maintaining this prevention program. And to establish procedures and guidelines. And then below that, again, specific language that identifies exactly who this policy applies to, we wanted to be really specific that it. It applies to everybody, whether you're. A student personnel, a visitor, or you're using Butler technology or Butler data. Are we going to do what to?
Well, it says president is or the president's designated, you should be required to develop.
It just means that we have to have that program in place and so, so the responsibility out of my office is to make sure that we have this policy in place and that we follow the. The procedures.
I'm I'm just trying to figure out whether they're consistent or whether that's something that.
Well, the the policy language is going to be different depending on the policy. Bill and Kent, the 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 other thing, let me, and then I'll turn it over to Bill and Kent for just a second. The other covered accounts on the second page, we had to add advising human resources and accounts payable to the. The accounts that are specifically covered under red flag and identity theft. Do you want to speak to the?
Yeah. So the, so the Federal Trade Commission established their red flags program. Seven, eight, nine years ago now, prior to that, it was the the FACA fair and accurate credit transaction act. That, all that identifies under the the red flags rules is that it says that. You're a responsible party for the institution or the designated thereof, then needs to create. A program or guidelines below that. As long as we've got the program in place and training, which Kent is the designated as the chief financial officer is the designated. Person, because these have to do with. Trade and credit things, but. And and the only, according to the federal law. The only thing that it needs to say is that the president will, either the president or the president's appointee. Today, it's Kent Williams and to to Dr. Kroll's point a while ago, in taking my name out of that previous, in case Kent leaves tomorrow, we don't. Shouldn't need to, I mean, don't want to have to come back to go through a whole. Policy revision with you guys just to change a name, so. As long as, I mean, we comply with federal law by designating or by defining that the president or the president's designate will be the person. Down underneath the. Policies, guidelines, I'm sorry, guidelines and procedures where it gets into definitions, covered accounts. Detecting red flags, existing accounts and so forth, that's the program that is prescribed by the Federal Trade Commission. And has, Ken and I have worked together for a long time and building that, putting that together, then working with each department to train them in that program. To help try and prevent identity theft. But the policy itself, really, the the what's the the top page there, the the policy is. Almost verbatim from the federal government as to what the policy should say, right, and so we've gone through. Best practices with with them and then with our. Colleagues at other schools to make sure that 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 defines what the policy should say, so that we're in compliance with federal government. Excuse me, again, I'm sorry.
That's fine, I might just add, I think the. The main component is we we have to have a. A committee and and. Ted and Manuel are security consultant, is one of the key members on that. We have to meet annually, just kind of review the program, which departments we think. Are going to be covered and that's what they're listed there, and then we have to provide annual training for them and we've developed a training program. That's on our our canvas platform, that along with other mandatory training that. People from those departments have to do annually.
The policy on full data and email account termination. Again, the only new pieces of this really are is the wording at the top. That identifies that we will. Secure and maintain college information and college owned data if someone leaves either voluntarily or involuntarily. Or is terminated, we also have identified some of the same policy language that it applies to. Students and personnel and visitors or other individuals, whether they're using Butler information or technology or Butler data. So that it's a broad, you know, there's broad coverage. We added or clarified. Three new definitions, we clarified or added a definition for information systems and what that refers to. We added a definition to clarify what Butler data is. And we added a definition for technology. The two below that, the voluntary termination and the involuntary termination were already part of this, we just moved them up underneath the definitions section. So there's nothing different to there. We, on the second page. The checklist is provided by human resources. Data is to be transferred to a college managed managed data storage location rather than trying to identify that it's a. CD or a flash drive or something like that, again, a little bit more general but updated language. And the same thing on the last page then. That the data will be stored, that information services will secure all data stored on the employees' college owned devices. Email and manage the data storage rather than. Their network space and their email logs, so. So this again was just really kind of to clarify and update, Bill, do you want to talk a little bit about the process that we go through on the full data and email termination? And the reason.
Sure.
For that.
So because we do have records retention challenge, you know, concerns, if somebody leaves, we try to handle it. In two ways, right, so it's a voluntary separation. Generally speaking, we, all all their data that's on the network is constantly backed up, but if it's in on the computer. And they they leave voluntarily, we work with them them and the manager and we. Set that process up, if if somebody is leaving involuntarily, then obviously we have to make. Make the. Copies and then we have to terminate the, it's just, it's the standard. When somebody separates from any company that they work for, it's very standard language, so. We do back up all the data, all their mailboxes, everything. Because we have retention concerns and and also because we want to make sure that in in that transition from that person to the next, that's potentially take that position. That we don't lose information.
So and and it's basically.
That's correct.
I'm very glad to hear that.
You know, everything that goes into quarantine is is saved in in our. Our Microsoft server for a period of time, but if it's in quarantine and it's junk mail, if it's deemed junk mail by. By the rules in there, then it goes away, I mean, we can't store stuff in perpetuity, so we're not required to buy any, buy a spreadsheet or so.
And I apologize, but I've got to leave you.
We'll finish going through these other ones, so when you.
Watch it.
Okay. Okay. Have fun. It's not, we're just, we're recording it, so if you have some questions on the other policies, let me know. Okay, thanks.
Bye Shelby.
I will be killed by my wife.
Good luck, good luck to your son.
Thank you.
Shelley, you want to talk about the payroll information policy?
Hey, so we've been working through just kind of cleaning up some of our. HR policies and paying information as it's changed, some of this has been. Kind of leftovers from years gone by, that. Direct deposit or pay card information, we've kind of changed that several years ago when we no longer released paper checks. Everyone participates in direct deposit now, whether they receive it directly to their chosen bank account or whether it's on a pay card that we supply. So it used to be as an incentive to get people to elect direct deposit. We would say that, oh, you can get your pay a day earlier than everybody else if you get direct deposit. And we no longer do need that because everybody gets paid direct deposit now, there's no paper checks that that go through. It is still a day early, and so what, that's what I want to change, and so what I'd like to do is take out that. Information that really doesn't matter anymore about employees electing direct deposit. Including pay cards will receive their pay one day in advance if those not on direct deposit. So to make up the difference for the employees, I don't want to just, you know, kind of snag that away, our regular payday is the twenty fifth. And so by nature, they would get paid on the twenty fourth. So on by by this policy, so I want to change the payday to be the twenty fourth. So they don't lose that day. So they don't lose that day in advance, but it's, you know, all works out the same. But what it does do is it keeps us from having to move direct deposit dates constantly in the payroll process. It really is. And so it's not really changing anything, it's. Yes, correct, and it's not really a benefit to anyone that's on getting, you know, electing direct deposit because everybody gets that way. It does not apply, however, currently to our biweekly employees. Biweekly employees are always paid on the pay date, which is Friday, and they're direct deposit or no. So we only have one group that was getting paid ahead of the actual pay date. So that's what this policy is intended to do. The rest of this is just kind of clean up on some language.
The telecommuting and alternate work arrangements, this is, we've had a telecommuting. Policy in place for a while, and again, there's. Sizes here for you guys that are thinking about the font sizes. I'm just, I'm gonna do a disclaimer to start off with. But certainly, there's been. Situations because of COVID and post pandemic. To change these a little bit more. Bill and. Shelley worked on these, so I'll let Shelley, do you, do you want to talk about them?
Yeah, so you know, the complexion of telework has changed since COVID, and we have more opportunities to. Have some flexibility in the workplace than we did before, just because we were forced into it with COVID. But some of the things in this particular policy were extremely outdated, you know, spoke to having monit. Internet access through Daily Line or Modem. Like, yeah, dial up, remember it, and so we just kind of changed a lot of that type of language. We found that our, we think our policy was a little limiting before on what it was allow, and I think we can leave more of that up to. The individual discretion of the manager. And so we talk about flex hours, flex days and telecommute and what that means. There is an agreement that the employee needs to be available and during those times and can have regular meetings with their supervisor and so forth. And so we just made those a little bit clearer and cleaned up some of that language. We don't have a lot of people that, you know. Can telecommute just because they need to be forward facing with students and or employees. And with faculty and and so forth, so. But we do have those that are, you know, primarily very individual contributors and working just, you know, with computers and things like that. Or that are data mining and and so forth that really. Can do that quite well remotely or telework, so that's what this policy really is encompassed, try to get the. Policy and guidelines so that managers understand what those confines are.
Questions about that?
Do we have employees right now doing flex schedule?
A few, yeah, in different pockets. It just kind of depends. We have some. You know, that might come in a little earlier, leave a little earlier. They might have some that work four tens. And have, you know, what an extra day off a week, and it kind of just depends on the situation and what the business needs are.
The acceptable use policy is. A new policy. For I S. Really developed again to encompass a broader. Perspective and oversight of the technology compiled and put together. With best practices through Educause. Through our Kane Consortium, which is our Kansas and Nebraska. That Butler established and that Bills, our folks are actively involved with. Using our cybersecurity folks. And so, Bill, why don't you go ahead and kind of talk through this and. It it kind of covers a lot of different aspects of. Technology, but again, some things in place that maybe haven't been. In writing before, but understood practice or the information's been spread out among other policies.
Sure, so the top. Two thirds of the first page is the actual policy itself. Most of you have who've worked at. Other places understand the just acceptable use policy, you know, it's just saying that you're going to use our computers for. You know, acceptable things, right? And we clearly define that, though, those information systems, what we consider Butler data. And the technology under the procedures piece of it. To Dr. Kroll's point, the language of the acceptable use policy, which is the top probably half. Was developed, it has been, is developed from just industry standard language from Educause, Kane, the Kansas Community College and Gabor. Complying with all applicable federal, state and local laws and regulations, copyright licensing regulations. And procedures then established by Butler Community College, governing access to the information systems, our technology and our data. You know, we have to make sure and and. For those of you that, I mean, all of you have worked outside of the college, and so in in other areas, you know, we have to. We're responsible to make sure that like the software that's put on the computers that Butler owns is licensed. Yes, well, so this is compiled from, yes, it's all, yeah, we did not have a acceptable use policy in the employee handbook prior to this. We had one in the old information, information security policy and guidelines. But it wasn't in the employee handbook, so this is being included here so that it's a it's a net new policy. But anyways, you know, if any of you have ever been through a Microsoft licensing audit and then get. Found not in compliance with Microsoft and they like to find you for that, that's what this speaks to, is that responsibility that we have. As a college to make sure that our our devices, our systems and our data are being used in the right way. So as you roll down through the procedures, it just talks about the equipment, the hardware, the software that we're responsible for. It talks about appropriate use. On page, it'd be page two, I guess. Down in section D, all applicable college policies. So there's other policies within our. Handbook, the the student code of conduct, the web presence and branding policy, the secure handling of social security numbers. Of course, the copyright policy, which we brought some changes to you guys for. Full data and email account termination, records retention policy, identity theft, those things. That acceptable use also complies with those, right? And so this just kind of encompasses those pieces. You know, we say that under the, under the guidelines that users can't reverse engineer, decompile. Disassemble or dispose of third party software licensed to Butler Community College without first obtaining written approval approval. Again, industry standard, these are things that we have to be responsible for. Well, you'd think. Well, you'd think. There's a lot of these, there's a lot of these usually that we shouldn't have to put in policies, it should be common sense, but we do put in policy. So anyway. This is, you know, you guys go out and and do any. Excuse me, do any. Research and within your companies or with companies you work with, it's standard acceptable use.
We have to sign them.
And and, yeah, most places you have to sign them, this will be in the.
Thanks, Bill.
I'm happy to answer questions.
The next three things that are kind of in front of you are. Policies that are going to go away. The tablet computer policy, pipeline group policy and laptop computer policy. I'll let Bill and Shelley speak to those. They're outdated, they're obsolete.
Right, so we used to have a pipeline group policy because we used to have a program called Pipeline, and we no longer have a program called Pipeline, so. The assumption is we can remove that policy. Those things that were established in groups will be in the future established within SharePoint and those those processes are being. Further fleshed out by our SharePoint administrator, but the pipeline group policy doesn't exist. Anymore or shouldn't exist because we don't have pipeline anymore. The laptop computer policy. Back in the eighties and nineties, the there were some federal regulations around giving your employees laptops and how you had to do, you know. Kind of govern that fringe benefits and so forth. That's not the case anymore. A and B. Laptops are standard issue now for all our staff and faculty. Any of our staff and faculty. That are issued a computer. Can request a laptop, looking at a laptop because it increases mobility and increases their ability to do their work. And doesn't lock them down to a specific desk, and so. The laptop computer policy, where previously talked about eligibility and criteria approval processes and so forth. It's now just standard standard computing at Butler, so we felt like that could go away. And the same thing with the tablet computer policy. Again, we issue tablets, whether it's iPad or Surface tablet or some sort of tablet computer. When it's necessary, we do that today when it's necessary for instruction. If somebody. Doesn't necessarily need a full computer, but needs a tablet to take notes or do do presentations and so forth, so. Those are all kind of just encompassed in our in our standard issuance of computers and our P C replacement plan. So we felt like it was. Okay, to just remove those from the. Pipeline group policy. Tablet and laptop, I don't know what all else is. Yes, ma'am. I mean, I hope so. That's up to you, it's up to you guys, but that'd be my suggestion. Otherwise, I don't know how I'm going to enforce a pipeline. Yeah, I don't know how I'm going to enforce a pipeline group policy if we don't have pipeline, so.
That's the last one we have.
So this last one is just an update to the holiday and spring break policies and things like that that were in the handbook. There was. At one time, we had the spring break days that were. Just anytime during that to that week, you know, some y'all can take two days off and the departments had to stagger it, stagger people coming and going and. And so forth, so. We decided last year that we would. Make spring break, much like how we do Thanksgiving break and winter break, where we just define the time when the college will be closed. And for spring break and those two days. Everybody takes off, so we're not having to stagger people and some people can't take it off that week, and so they move it to two weeks later or a month later and. So we. It was, it was just. Separate, yeah, it was a separate policy that said. People could take it, they had to work the full week, we would be open, but you you just, you could stagger, you could have two days off. And so. It was very difficult for anybody, like for staff to know, okay, well, when is so and so going to be in or if students were coming. That week or something, or anyone needed to talk to financial aid, they may not be able to get a hold of the person they were wanting to get a hold of. So it was just random when they were taking off, when anyone was taking off, so we made it consistent. That everybody takes off two days that week, which will be Thursday and Friday. And we do the same for Thanksgiving. You take Wednesday, Thursday, Friday off. That's the colleges close those days. So students are all gone. Yeah, yeah, we're just making it a designated two days. Well. It is a banking holiday, but. It is one that the college has always had off. And it falls right before we do our international or international, our institutional development day, students are gone that day, so that's why we take the day off to go. But. Yeah, it just wasn't listed and I was like, well, I don't know why it's not listed. Yeah. The other one that, you know, a lot of people don't get off is Good Friday, and we do that one also, so. Yeah.
I'm kind of interested about Veterans Day.
I'd love to add that, no. That unless I got President's Day, I'd like to add, no, I'm kidding.
The problem we get into.
Yes, exactly.
So we have to be strategic in how we.
Yes, no, I understand.
The the plan is, unless there are. You know, major. Issues with any of these, I would, I would propose that we just go ahead and put these on the consent agenda. For the December board meeting, unless you want them as individual action items and. You know, motion every single one of them and second and all discuss all that sort of stuff, otherwise.
So I think just updating policies as indicated in the overall packet.
I think there's, I think there's eight altogether, and I don't know, I remember if that includes the three that were eliminated or not, but. I think, yeah, I think there were eight that I sent you and then three that we're eliminating.
So you're proposing to address them collectively, but do it as an actual action item.
You need a vote.
No, we can't vote. Works section, but just give me direction so I know where to put it on the agenda. You have to. Somehow you have to approve them either as board action item or on the consent agenda, but we have to have a. Action item, okay.
Then we can approve them all.
All this one, one collective action.
Okay, that sounds good, thank you. That's all we have. Since Shelby left. We'll do the enrollment, we'll do some additional enrollment stuff at the December meeting, if that's okay. I think that's all that we had. Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, thanks all for the info.